Good evening. Welcome to Select Board Meeting on 14 March 2022. This is the first meeting following the town meeting. So I'm going to be opening the meeting. I'm calling it order at 7:01 PM. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flying United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first order of business is going to be the organization of the Select Board Officers. The first thing will be appointing or voting on a chairperson. Is there a motion?
Make a motion when you elect Jim Leeny to be the chairperson.
I'll second that.
Seconded, no discussion. All of them. Guess what, Mr. Leeny?
You're the chairperson. You didn't vote.
Oh, they didn't vote. Oh, all those in favor of Mr. Leeny.
Aye.
Unanimous. You're the chairperson, Mr. Leeny.
Thanks a lot, guys, and Mary Lee.
Thanks for stepping up, Jim. Your time is coming.
Next item is the election of a vice chairman. Is there a nomination?
I would nominate Mr. Combs.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I'm nay, for me.
Next item is to elect a clerk. Nominations for clerk?
I nominate Mr. Spalding.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Bob, I'll ask, are there any other nominations? I'm trying to get you off the hook, Bob.
That's all right. I'm probably going to handle it.
Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Not Mrs.
No, not Mrs.
Nomination for parliamentarian.
I'll nominate Mr. Mark.
I'll second that.
And a second?
Yep.
Any, I'll do the same thing to Joe to be fair. Are any other nominations? If not, all those in favor of Joe Mark as parliamentarian indicate by saying aye.
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 I abstain.
I abstain from the chairmanship, too.
A little late for that, Mr. Leeny.
He didn't say anything, so.
I'd also like to welcome Mary Lee. We look forward to working her, working with her in the best interest of the town of Castleton.
Thank you.
Resolution, meeting day and time.
May I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to resolve that the town of Castleton will have their regular select board meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 7:00 PM at the fire department community room unless otherwise posted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, adopts rules of procedure.
I would move that we adopt the rules, the select board rules of procedure that were provided to us in our packets.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes. Here, Bob. Review conflict of interest policy. I don't believe there've been any changes in this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the conflict of interest policy as presented, which was originally adopted on July 8th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
If not, all of the favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion of the agenda.
You might as well just keep turning.
Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Next item is the approval of the minutes from February 21, 2022.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of February 21st, 2022 as presented.
A second? And a second. Discussion, corrections, additions.
I wasn't there, so I'm going to abstain.
I didn't see anything.
Yep.
I didn't see anything, but I didn't check it for punctuation.
Okay, Bob. Mary Lee?
No, I'm good.
I wasn't here, so I...
Okay, all right. Did you not zoom in, Joe? You didn't zoom in at all?
I did not at that meeting.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Well, whoops, I'm holding. Well, I don't know if this is appropriate or not. I just, I wanted to ask Dick why he voted no. Do you need me to read that out, Dick, on the mailbox damage policy? Do you remember why you voted no on that?
Because the actual thing we were voting on, in my opinion, was not clear. There were a couple of dimensions on there that weren't there.
Okay.
And I felt that we shouldn't approve something that wasn't clear. If something came to us later in life that actually showed all the dimensions that we were requiring homeowners to adhere to, then I'd be happy to approve it.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
I abstain.
You abstain, Joe. Motion carries. I guess it's three, three to zero because Mary Lee wasn't on the board at the time. Citizens' comments and concerns, issues not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself for the recorder.
My name is Bob Standard. I'm from Manchester. And I am a proud owner of a camp on Lake Mamasine as of August of last year.
Are you, Mr. Jones?
I am.
I owe you an apology for not returning your phone call. I got your message this morning out of the house for grandchildren. I'm lucky to be alive. I was a selectman in the town of Manchester for five years. I was on the planning commission for 13. And I really appreciate all, anybody in Vermont who's crazy enough to want to serve a board of selectmen anywhere.
Thank you.
And so you all have my undying gratitude for being here. I do want to speak to this issue. I've written a little letter that I'm going to hand over to you, but I'd like to read it for the record if I could.
Excuse me, Bob. Are you going to addressing the issue of herbicides?
Correct.
That was the next item on the agenda. But if, well, let me hold you right there.
Pay early and a dollar ahead, then.
We try to be. Is there anyone else, you stay right there, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Anybody on Zoom, Mike?
Chat stuff. Have you heard that anybody on Zoom have a question for the board on an item that's not on the agenda? And the use of herbicides in the Lake Mamasine is on the agenda.
How long is it going to take, Bob?
Not very long.
Go for it.
I'll try to read fast.
Go for it.
I write this letter to you in hopes that you will join the town of Hubbardton in their haven as a board keeping Lake Mamasine chemical free. The spraying of this pristine lake is a solution looking for a problem. In the information that the Lake Mamasine Association Board has released, they have stated that milfoil has increased from 250 acres in 2016 to 700 acres today. They use these misleading numbers to create a sense of urgency for their desire to spray the lake. They have since revised the 700 acres down to 620 acres. They would like us to believe that Lake Mamasine is a lake in crisis, and nothing could be further from the truth. The last professional survey of Lake Mamasine was done in 1996 by the Water Resources Board when they were, that's not in my letter, but they were talking about doing the drawdown back then as a point of reference. In that survey, the Water Resources Board determined that Lake Mamasine had 600 acres of milfoil throughout the entire lake. Instead of a 250% increase over the last 10 years as declared by the LBA, the reality is that milfoil has increased about 1.03% over the past 25 years. That's not really a crisis from where I'm coming from. Talk to people who really know our lake, and you'll hear that milfoil comes and goes and was a lot worse when it first arrived about four years ago than it is today. Milfoil, a non-native plant, has been in Vermont lakes and ponds for about 60 years, longer than most people who live on the lake today. In all likelihood, it reached its maximum potential years ago. We're being led to believe that there's suddenly an explosion in the growth of milfoil just over the past few years. I would suggest that the only real explosion on Lake Mamasine has been the number of people who bought camps there, including me. To the best of my knowledge, no one has ever died or gotten sick from milfoil. Milfoil is a plant that is partially responsible for Lake Mamasine recognition as the number one best fishery in Vermont and the cleanest lake in Vermont. Along with the 30 other species of plants in our lake, milfoil helps filter out the fine particles of dirt and water, which is probably why the lake is so muddy clean. You can see 20 feet down in that lake. We can continue to try to, we can't continue to try to kill our way out of perceived problems. Weeds may be a problem for some, but it should be clear by now, based on the public outcry, the Fish and Wildlife Report on the superior health of this lake, the rally that was held here a week ago, the 2,000 names that we have on petitions, that the overwhelming majority of people don't feel as though the weeds are a problem and want to keep this very clean lake free of chemicals. We don't know how the LBA membership feels about this because there was neither a vote nor was there a poll taken of the membership. All we know is that the majority of a small board wants to do this. Most of the LBA membership learned about the plan through our efforts of bringing this out in the public. Injecting herbicides into Lake Mamasine does not have the support of the people. We wholeheartedly support your position to have a community-wide discussion on milfoil and how best to manage our lake. However, that meeting can only take place after the LBA withdraws its application and removes any reference to spraying. We cannot, in fairness, expect to have a fair and rational meeting as long as the threat of spraying is being held over our head and is still in play. Remove spraying from the application, and then and only then can we have a real dialogue as to the true extent of the milfoil problem and how best to manage the lake without using toxic chemicals and with the full support of this community. We ask that you tonight support that the people, the people, and take the stand of support of keeping Lake Mamasine chemical free and request that the LBA withdraw its application so that we can have the honest dialogue that we all seek. That's me. I would like to read briefly from a letter from Bill Wood. You might know Bill Wood. Bill Wood and a man named Terry Moran did a study with two guys in a boat, and they went back and forth 100 miles across Lake Mamasine. And they did their own study on milfoil. And that study is the study that the LBA has referenced numerous times in their public statements that they put out. I'm just going to read the end of this because, no pun intended, Bill goes in the weeds here, and I'm going to skip that. I'm just going to read what he concludes. The LBA is using an invalid comparison to raise concerns among Lake Mamasine area residents that milfoil infestation has increased from 250 acres to 700 acres in five years. They are using this fictitious increase in milfoil infestation to justify the use of herbicide Procellicor. The LBA cannot show that milfoil infestation has increased since 2016. If you compare their 21, 2021 survey and the 2016 included with enclosure A, it is rather easy to conclude that not much has changed in five years in Mamasine. Enclosure C shows it 2021 and 2016 surveys side by side. The LBA claims an increase in milfoil infestation of 450 acres from 2016 to 21, roughly the size of the yellow square that I've placed on the Mac, which I will hand over to you if I have it here. So where are all these additional acres of milfoil? The LBA has used false and misleading information in their public notice, reference number one, and during two of their town meetings, reference two and three, to conclude that there's been a dramatic increase in milfoil infestation in Lake Mamasine in the last five years. The LBA is using this false and misleading information as the basis for their recommendation to begin an aggressive and expensive multi-year treatment with the herbicide Procellicor. The LBA's recommendation is simply not justifiable using the information that they are providing to the public. I will leave this with you, and I think you should have it. And at the end here, I'm not going to bother reading this. I'll let you read it. It's a little note from Cynthia Moulton, who is a, I forgot her title, a scientist.
She's a toxic toxicity professor.
Thank you. With the, with Castle, yes, I was going to say that, but I couldn't remember all those words. And she's with Castle, the university. And in short, she says, well, the thing about Procellicor, it's not what we know, it's what we don't know about Procellicor. Procellicor came into being only three and a half years ago. You will not be able to find any long-term information, any long-term data about Procellicor because it is not long-term and hasn't been here longer. So with that, I'd like to hand this over to you. Thank you very much for listening to me. That's more than my wife would do. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
You will notice, folks, that this is on the agenda for five minutes. We're ahead, so there's a little bit of time there. But it's my understanding from the other board members that the board is still gathering information, especially scientific information. And it's my understanding that the board is not prepared to make any decision on this this evening, certainly without not hearing from the other side. It doesn't mean that we are supporting one side or the other, it's just that we need more information. That being said, I believe the board is agreeable to holding a public meeting in the very near future. Two dates have been suggested. One is the 23rd of this month, and the second is the 30th of this month, hopefully at the Jeffords Science Building. At that time, the proponents of the petition will be given a half hour to present their evidence and their arguments, and the opposition will have the same amount of time to present theirs. If the board, this board wishes to take a position after hearing all of the information on both sides, that is something that could happen. I'm sure at least some of you are also aware of the procedure before the Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC, and that a hearing can be requested following the first draft, which would be drafted by the agency. At that time, once again, people can present their arguments pro and con. If there's anything else that other board members wish to say, I'd, well, I have one other little thing. I think we all know that the town of Castleton and the town of Hubbardton do not own the lake. The property owners do not own the lake. The various groups that use the lake do not own the lake. The lake is owned by and supposedly managed by the Department of Environmental, by the Agency of Natural Resources, which includes Department of Environmental Conservation. It also includes Fish and Wildlife, and low man on the totem pole is Forest and Parks, all of which would have an interest in the lake. They also have to, of course, manage it for the public good. So that being said, Joe, did you have something you wish to say?
Yes, but just very briefly, my understanding is that the individual who is leading this process of the permit review, I believe his name is Misha Center, it will accept input at any point. The public hearing doesn't occur until after a preliminary draft report has been issued, but they have already received input and they will continue to receive and consider input before that draft is prepared.
Dick, do you have anything?
Maybe a question for Mr. Mark or anyone else who can answer is, when would we expect that draft to be issued? Is that after the meeting that occurs tomorrow?
The overall process for permit consideration typically takes six months, and it, that is not a binding timetable. It can happen more quickly in simple matters. It can take longer in complicated matters. But that's the framework that the department has issued just for the purpose of citizens who are interested in this. I would not, you know, don't quote me on this, but based on the conversations I had, I would assume that it will take a few months to produce a preliminary draft and an additional month, weeks or months to consider public input in the, subsequent to the preliminary draft and make a final draft. So if I were setting my calendar, I would expect a preliminary draft somewhere in the three-month, three to four-month timeframe.
Any other questions from the board?
You say three months and say six months. Joe, when did that clock start ticking?
When the petition, the application for a permit was submitted.
When was that? Do you know?
Late July, late January.
Late January?
Yes. Okay, Mary Lee?
No questions.
No? Okay. We're not going to open this up to a lot of people speaking. You have your opportunity to do that at the public hearing. And I, it's as simple as that. You'll have your opportunity.
I'm asking about the date, the two dates.
23rd or the 30th.
But when will that be decided? Some of us may have to change the schedule in order to be there.
As, as soon as our town manager can coordinate it with the university, which will probably be tomorrow. Okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. They're waiting for me to give them a date, the 23rd or the 30th. So when you guys make that decision, I will follow up with them, and they'll lock the date in for us.
Do any of the board members have preference of the 23rd or the 30th?
I've already checked, I'm available either night.
Joe?
Likewise.
Bob?
I prefer the 30th.
Prefer the 30th? Okay, Mary Lee?
Both are okay.
30th is okay, then with, is that okay with everybody?
Not that I want to put this off any longer than I have to, but I'm not here the 23rd.
Okay.
I can commit to the 30th.
Does the zoning administrator have a question?
Not a question, just I checked my email. The Public Utility Commission, the Public, yeah, Public Utility Commission has agreed to a public hearing and a site visit to the Stone Mill Solar Project on, on March 30th.
During the day, Jones?
Well, the public, the walkthrough is during the day and then the public hearing at night. 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. I glanced at my email, so I'll let you know tomorrow.
All right. So how do we resolve this?
I can zoom in if I have to on the 23rd.
Can you zoom in?
I can zoom in.
All right, can we move back then to the 23rd?
I have my objection.
Okay?
Fine.
All right, then we will plan on it for the 23rd, which is a Wednesday. If that being said, I don't wish to shut down the former chairman, but he's back there waving his arm, but we're not going to, we're not going to continue with this. Go ahead, Joe.
A simple question is, would it be possible to move that date into April? Since there's people that would like to attend that I don't believe can attend until after your April meeting, your first April meeting.
All right.
I'd have to go back to the school.
You'd have to go back to the school. As soon as, we understand it, and we certainly understand what you're saying, as soon as we do that, we will publicize it, it'll be on the website, and it'll be out on the public as to what the date is. And since you, you made a good point, Joe.
Can I ask Mr. Bruno a question?
There'll be more owners from the lake that will be here, so if you're looking for people from the other side.
Okay, yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else?
I was just wanted to ask Mr. Bruno if he had a suggestion or a recommendation for a time.
Your, your, when's your first meeting in April? Probably don't want to have it that night, but I'm thinking.
No, we don't.
Schedule something happen.
We want to have it, we want to have that as the only time.
Special meeting, yes. The 11th, Dick, the first Monday, the second Monday is the 11th.
So you're thinking before or after that, Joe?
Yes, after that.
Okay, I'm not opposed to that.
11th of April.
Okay.
I think you're going to find there's going to be more participation then.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the Lake Mamasine Association here who would like to make a very short statement? I'm talking about the people who are, who has, who have presented the petition. Yes, ma'am, and that, and this will be it. Go ahead.
Well, I'm not on the board anymore, but I'm on the association, and I just have a very brief statement. I don't get out often at night, so.
Excuse me, could, could you identify yourself, please, for the...
Wenda Bird.
Wenda Bird, Allison?
And, you know, I remember the 60s, Agent Orange, fine, no problem. We know that's not true. I've been through chemotherapy 33 years ago. Still have effects from that today. I don't think the lake needs chemotherapy. I think the lake needs to be cut twice, need a haircut twice. Done, that's it.
Thank you, Wenda. Okay, we have a lot of things on our agenda tonight, folks. Would you like a five-minute recess for people who may wish to go on to something else? Or if not, we'll just go ahead. Five-minute recess? Okay. Five-minute recess.
You ready? Call back to orders.
Call back to order. The next item, gentlemen, would you please take your conversations outside or in the
I have to get you a gavel.
We have to gavel, Jim.
I thought about bringing it, you know, I did.
I'll make you one. You won't be able to carry it.
I got one, I got one. Never used it. Gentlemen, would you please take your conversations either out in the hall or somewhere where bringing the meeting back to order? Okay, next item on the agenda, GIS Internet Service Proposal Mapping Technology.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Although we have set a date for a meeting on, well, we haven't set a date, we have decided to have a meeting, as I understand it, for special consideration of the Procellicor question, I was hoping we could still spend a couple of minutes talking about the plan for that meeting.
I guess the plan that, that I would suggest is one half hour for the applicants and one half hour for those folks who are in opposition to it, and that they arrange their speakers, and that if they wish to bring into science or technology, they have every right to do that.
So I have reached out personally to four scientists whom I know, one of whom is Cynthia Moulton, and three of them responded with input. I, I did not know what their opinions would be when they, when I reached out to them. Cynthia has expressed an interest in speaking if we have a meeting, which we've now decided to do. So you're recommending that she be part of the half hour that people with concerns...
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Period. That she would be, she would speak to us during the half hour that the people with concerns about Procellicor are given to speak.
If the people who have concerns are comfortable with that, that's fine, they can bring in anybody they want.
My second comment was going to be that I think we should restrict speakers to Town of Castleton voters, given that we are the Town of Castleton Select Board. to Town of Castleton voters, given that we are the Town of Castleton Select Board.
Any of the board members have a problem with that?
What, what exactly does that mean, Joe? Like Bob Stenner will be able to speak?
He's a resident, well, he's, he's property owner.
About property owners, Joe?
He's not a voter.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I thought voters, you know, given that this is not a primary residence for a lot of people, I think we should focus on the people for whom it is a primary residence. But I, I defer to the board on that point.
I personally think it should be open to anybody.
Okay.
Well, anybody that lives.
That uses the lake.
Okay, Bob, what's your thoughts?
Well, people that own property around the lakes, for sure.
Esther, chair, if I.
Hold it.
That's, if there's property owners around the lake, we don't need somebody coming in from Thetford and telling us what, you know, unless they want to make it part of their half hour, if they've had experience with this, they can make it part of the half hour. That's what I feel.
Dick?
Is it fair to assume, and I'll maybe ask Rob this or Mr. Bion because they're here, that if they've got, if they know they got a half an hour to work with and they want to have Mr. Standard speak and he's not a voter, you're okay with that? You, you, this may take a moment, but go ahead, Rob, please.
I personally believe that anybody that feels they should want to speak, that uses this lake, that comes to our town to support this town for anything, should be allowed to speak. I also think half hour person's not going to be anywhere near enough. I mean, this is not a small issue that you guys have in front of you. This is a major issue with the town right now. Half an hour isn't going to cut it. Cynthia's program's going to be longer than a half an hour.
Well, I wasn't done yet, Rob. So I just wanted your opinion on picking who to speak. And I got that. Thank you. I think that anyone who has a residence on the lake should not be excluded. In addition to that, I think that a half an hour for the, I'll call them the anti-herbicide people, and a half an hour for the LBA or the pro-herbicide people. And then the board should have a discretionary period of time to, to listen to whoever they choose to listen to, which could be this scientist that Mr. Mark is talking about or someone else that we as a board decide it should be. So that wouldn't necessarily detract from the half an hour that the pro or anti people are being.
Exactly what are you saying?
What I'm saying is that if we, we give the, Mr. Steele and his group half an hour and we give Mr., oh, what the heck's his name?
Drazen.
Mr. Drazen and his crew half an hour to speak, then we should have some time to call on other people as we deem necessary.
Who's our people?
We as the board.
Okay, all right, okay.
Should be able to call on somebody like Cynthia Moulton. Is that her name?
She could be in the half hour. What, she could be in, she could be, they can, they can get, bring in anyone they want.
So there's where we don't agree. I'm saying in addition to those two half-hour periods, we as a board should be able to solicit testimony if we want to, above and beyond that first initial hour. That's what my opinion is.
Well, that's not the way you usually conduct hearings and it's not the way you conduct a hearing at the state level either. But if that's what you wish to do, fine.
Well, you asked for opinion.
We're not gonna, we're not going further with this, gentlemen. Mike?
The, just a point is the, the 28th of March was also coincided with a select board meeting, so the, the half hour was kind of crunched in there because of the select board meeting. But if it's not being held in a select board meeting, there's, you're not faced, you're not trying to put something back to back, so.
Okay. What's your pleasure, folks? I'm referring to the board. Mary Lee?
I don't think a half an hour is enough for either side.
Okay. What would you suggest?
An hour.
Okay. Is that agreeable to everyone? An hour?
Can, can we modify that to be up to an hour? I, I'm not sure that the, the LBA board would, would choose to use an hour. I don't know. They might.
Anyone that doesn't choose to, that, that's fine, but I hate to see anyone limited.
How about you, Bob?
I like what Mary Lee.
You like what Mary Lee said?
I did. It needs to be an hour, a half hour. That's not going to cut it.
All right, so what would your, what would your suggestion be, the two of you?
My suggestion is that each, each party has an hour.
Each party has an hour.
Up to an hour, I think.
And I like, I like what Dick said, too. We should be, we should be able to allow to bring.
All right. That okay with you, Dick? And Joe, can you live with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I can live with that.
And I, I, have we decided not to restrict who can speak or did we, are we in favor of people who own property in town?
What's your position?
My position is you can't do it just to people that own property. I might be a fisherman and I own property, but not on the lake. But how many fishermen come from Orwell, Benson, Fairhaven? I don't think they should be limited. I think they should have a chance to speak as well.
Any other thoughts on this?
The only thought I would have on that, Mary Lee, is like, I agree with what you're saying in principle. However, there could be literally hundreds of people that want to speak on this issue and there's, if we're going to limit each point of view to an hour, then we can't let everyone speak. There just isn't, it isn't going to work.
And you're going to get a lot of repetition.
That's where.
You're gonna get a lot of repetition.
We already agreed that each side managers their hour amongst themselves, so.
Yes.
Rob, you've got to get with your hundred people or five hundred, you know, four hundred ninety-nine of them can't speak.
We're good, buddy.
Okay.
Okay.
They can handle that.
So are we now in agreement that it will be extended for up to an hour for each party? And what about the question of who may speak? Or is that left up to the two, the two parties?
I think we need to leave it up to the two parties.
Leave it up to the two parties?
Yes.
I see Joe's nodding his head. Dick, is that okay with you?
Makes sense to me.
Mary Lee, you've already stated your position. I guess that's it. Okay. Now can we go on?
We'll have to set a date, but we don't know what that date is.
I appreciate your giving me that indulgence by allowing us to talk about process a bit.
So.
I like process, too.
Mr. Chairman, our next step then is to decide when the date's going to be?
I thought we were, we were requested to go into April.
Yeah, we are, so.
Okay, so what do we have in April?
It's available.
On a Wednesday, aren't we limited on a Wednesday or something by the university?
They, they limited this for March up to, on a Wednesday because of what's going on. There's a bunch of presentations that are coming up, so it may be limited on the days, days of the week and the number of days in a week. So I'll reach out tomorrow to the university and get the list of available dates and get back to you on it.
I believe that the question that was asked and was suggested that it be, is it fair to say in mid-April or later?
Yeah, mid-April.
Mid-April, okay. Mid-April, Mike?
Wednesday after your first meeting.
The thirteenth. Shoot for the thirteenth, Mike. Wednesday the thirteenth. Let's just shoot for that. We got to have a date to shoot for.
Yeah, and if that doesn't work, we're not violating the open meeting law by setting up an open meeting by consensus, are we?
I would hope not.
No, no.
Okay.
Last thing we want to do is violate the open meeting.
We'll figure something out and let you guys know as soon as we figure it out, okay?
Yes, Joe?
When you warn the meeting, how many days you have to do it before? Do you have thirty days before?
For a public meeting?
No, no, it's, it's a, it's technically a select board meeting, so we'd have to warn it, what, three, three, four days ahead of time? But we'll do it as soon as we can.
Okay.
We're not going to drag our feet on it. Okay, now on to another controversial item here. Mary Lee, GIS Internet Service Proposal Mapping Technology.
Mary Jo.
Are you folks going to be a team or?
Just going to fill in the gaps, if there are any gaps. He's going to fill in the gaps. So did each board member get a copy of this?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I'm trying to have the lake with us. I can give you a real quick demonstration if you want, just to kind of show you. But just to start, on page two of this, there's a picture of a community Y GIS platform. So it's, it kind of gives you an idea of all the different departments in town that could use this information for, for their, for themselves. And that wouldn't be right off the bat, but if they're interested in it, if they're interested in downloading any information, it can be accessed by all these different departments. And the only other thing in here I wanted to point out is that there's a function for the staff to log in. So the staff in the town office, the clerk can log in and they can upload documents if they like to, if they want to share it with the public, or if somebody wants to do some research, they can access it online. Ned would still get her fees for it, but she could allow searchers, you know, so if we're in a situation like we've been in for the last two years where the office is closed and people can't come in and do research, there's a possibility that information can be accessed online. And that's up to the department and the select board and staff as to whether they choose to do that. But this is a pretty wide-ranging proposal. It's, and it's tied to our mapping, so our regular mapping doesn't go away. That's still the same. This is above and beyond. So when we're, I guess I should mention the cost.
Yeah, I'm looking for that.
Because it is costly.
Very good.
It's on the last page fourteen, tells you what the cost is. So the setup is a one-time fee of three thousand dollars, and then there is an annual fee of three thousand dollars. And then the staff site is four seventy-five if we do it right off the bat. If we wait to do a staff site, then it's a, it's a higher cost. So we're looking at an annual fee of three thousand dollars and a setup fee of thirty-four seventy-five. Okay, so that's.
But the first fee would be paid, we're talking about using ARPA funds to do the setup, the initial setup, to build the data layers.
Mr. Chairman, this was brought to the select board at a previous meeting for use of the ARPA funds. We just didn't have enough data at the time to share with the board, so that's why Mary Jo and, and Jonas are here, just to try to fill in those gaps and then ask you for your consideration.
Right, so for our office, for, for me, I could upload things like property transfers, name changes, things like that in real time. I don't have to wait to do it once a year. So I think overall the information would be more accurate and people can access it online. There would be a public site. For Jonas's purposes for zoning, he can access it and he can, you know, he has to send out letters to abutters whenever he has something come up. So, you know, really with a click of a button, he can pull up the map, he can see all the abutters, he can print out the labels. I mean, it's just, it seconds instead of what can take quite a bit of time to do that. So if you want me to give you a real quick, I can log into the Proctor, Proctor uses this, and just kind of give you a two-minute walkthrough of what it looks like. And then if you look at this over, then it basically will show you the same thing that's in the town. If you're interested.
Mary Lee?
Is this just for the town, town offices?
This is, it's for the Town of Castleton, but it will be a public site. So anyone can go to the, somebody, anybody will be able to go to the town website and they'll be able to click on the mapping and they'll be, be able to pull up property tax maps, they'll be able to pull up, pull up lister cards. They'll be able to, you know, they, they can look at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission overlays. They'll be able to look at, you know, overlays for, for zoning.
It's not going to affect my internet itself. It's not going to make my internet faster. It's only going to make.
No, this is, this is a project strictly for the tax mapping and parcel mapping.
Okay.
Your, your water people could, they could upload their maps of their sewer lines and water lines. Fire department could use it, police department could use it for various things. So, you know, long-term, it's, it's kind of what's coming. Many towns are using it. This, this CAI technologies are pretty much taking over a large segment of the mapping in the state and they're pretty proficient at, at doing this. They're a pretty good program.
Joe?
You've answered one of my questions. I, I was going to ask, have you talked with other towns that are using this? And clearly you've been in touch with people in Proctor and they're pleased with it?
Yeah, Proctor's been using it for a while. Jonas uses it in Pollock. I have not talked with any other towns that use it. I do have a list, I think, on my computer of the number of towns and who they are that are using the program. So you can go to any of those town websites and you can click on their assessor or map program, wherever they have it on their site, and you can look at almost anything in town to get information.
My second question is, you mentioned something that costs four hundred seventy-five dollars, staff something or other. What, what is that?
That's a staff site. So other staff in the building, if they have documents or information they want to upload onto this site, they can do that and then it's available to public access. I think in, in the demonstration we had from, from CAI, he was showing Ned some of the things that she could do. I mean, she could do all kinds of documents if she chooses. You know, she gets paid pretty much when people come in and do research and they have to pay for documents. She can still have her fees for those things, but she, you know, there's a way of doing it. But she can have that information available so that if she's not in the office, people can still come in and do their research.
And to what extent does this replace access that citizens would otherwise have if they came into the office?
It wouldn't affect it at all.
But is it providing essentially the same information, but just allowing them to do the research at home?
They could do that. They could do that. I think for, for my purposes, for tax mapping purposes, I think it's going to be better, more accurate and easier to access for people. Right now, we have a computer in the lobby where people can come up and pull up lister cards. And it's not even really the same lister card or the same property record card as what I have on my computer. It's, I'm not really sure why it's a little different. But this will have the same information I have, the same cards I have can be pulled up and you can find out information about the property. And if a property transfers, I can go in and I can make that name change when I do the transfer. We don't have to wait to do it once a year. So people aren't coming in saying, well, I bought that property and my name is wrong on the map. So we can, we can do those tweaks right then and there.
Sometimes they say, I never got that notice because I'm relying on data that's about a year old. When I make notice to adjoining property owners, they'll either say, well, they never got it because it's an old address and somebody's moved away. So I have to wait a year in order to find that, or I have to have Martha go out, go out, go and research the, the new property owner through the property, through the tax, tax records or the new ground list.
Is there any basis on which a person might find this an invasion of their privacy?
Well, they might, but it is all public information.
Okay.
It's, there's nothing private about it, any, any property information.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question. How is this going to be paid for each and every year?
If the board chooses to cover the one-time setup fee, the, the Mary Jo's budget actually would cover this.
Every year?
Every year.
No problem.
Yes.
Okay.
I've done that. Because one of the things that we don't have in the, we don't have a clerk, so her, she, there's money in her budget for the clerk. So a lot of this stuff that, all the extra work that this could help take care of, you wouldn't need a clerk. So her budget will absorb it without even having to raise her budget at all.
Any other questions in the board?
Yes, Dick?
So this is a question for Mary Jo, mostly, maybe Jonas. This, so this would create a database that would be in real time and everyone would have the same information. And it also sounds like it would significantly reduce the potential for errors. Your part?
Easily. Just to give you an example, you don't have a copy of, I didn't bring a copy of the zoning district map. Some of these properties overlap or they're in multiple zoning districts. If you were to look at the zoning district map, you could not find specific information on flood zone information, floodway information, lake shore permitting requirements or boundaries, streams, ponds, wetlands. You could pull up each and every parcel and that would, it would, it would show any of those data, data layers.
I was going to say, so all these layers are on that database?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you could, yeah.
Okay.
Anything the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has will be uploaded.
Yeah.
And so all those layers can be, you know, you can just.
One final question. What's your preferred timeframe on this?
Um.
Could do it now?
You can, you know, whenever, whenever the board, it takes, I think, sixty days. I think you said sixty days to actually complete the work. So. So, you know, we can do it whenever.
Okay.
He does, he does our updating of our maps as of April 1st.
So we don't have to do this in the next 20 days? But it would be nice for you, as soon as is better, right?
Sooner's better.
Okay.
You know, but he'll take my information April 1st and he, he does his regular mapping work. And then this is above and beyond. If he does it at the same time, I don't know if it's any faster for him to do it at the same time. If he knows we're going to do it, you know, he can do some planning.
Okay. So we can pretty much kick this off anytime?
Okay.
I'm good.
Mary Jo, you're asking for $3,000 from the ARPA money? Is that correct?
$3,000, $3,475.
Oh, $475?
For the one-time setup. And then it's a $3,000 a year addition to my budget.
Well, it won't be an addition, Mary Jo. Your budget will absorb it, so.
Or my budget will.
But on the other, on the other side, we are already paying an annual fee to update the property. So I know.
That still happens.
So it's $3,000 in addition to.
Yes.
And so what would, what would probably happen is that Mike is preparing a list of requests for ARPA money. And then from my understanding, the board will score the various requests and act accordingly.
When does, when does all this ARPA, I keep, I've been carrying a hat, ARPA.
December 2024.
December of 2024, the money has to be obligated and has to be executed by two years later, December of '26.
Okay. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo.
Moving on to the representative appointment and alternate appointment, Rutland County Solid Waste District. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we appoint Jim Lemey as the Rutland County Solid Waste Representative.
Second? Second. Discussion.
I'd like to ask you, Mr. Lemey, will you attend the meetings? Not like our past district reps that.
I can't, I can't say that I'll attend all of them. I'll also rely on our alternate.
Make every effort to, they only meet once a month. They meet on Wednesday nights.
I'll do the best I can, Bob.
Okay, that's all I'm asking for.
All right. All those in, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I abstain.
I will also make a motion to appoint Tim Gilbert as the Rutland County Solid Waste District Alternate Representative.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Second. Discussion.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gilbert if his immediate family member is still employed by the Casella family. Is that correct?
You might be confused with another girlfriend or something else.
Last I knew, it was your daughter that was employed.
By whom?
I believe it was Casella Construction.
Yeah, several, didn't.
Casella Construction?
My daughter, several years ago, was.
She no longer is?
Casella Construction, yes. Thank you for asking. She now lives in Colorado, is employed by Dale Resorts.
Okay. I just, I just found that to be a pretty serious conflict of interest. That was all.
It was pretty funny, Bob, with you and the trash business.
Okay, fellas.
It's all construction. Your trashy neighbor that lives down the street is not part of Casella Waste. So I don't know how that would even be a, a conflict of interest, but.
That's, that's your opinion, Tim. That's your opinion.
Any other, any other discussion on the appointment of the alternate? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, folks four to one. Board, board appointments. Matthew Ryan, Recreation, three years.
So moved.
How about that? Is there, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. We have letters from each of these individuals in our packet.
He's online if you did have any questions for him.
Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Marley Rosario, Recreation Department, three years.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of the appointment of Marley Rosario for three years indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Scott Childs, DRB Alternate.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second it.
And a second. Discussion. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, are, do we have all of our regular DRB positions filled at this time?
I should have asked Jonas before he left.
I was told, Mr. Chairman, I was told that we do and that we did receive a letter of resignation from Sean Steves at the end of May, I think, or in May.
First of May, I think.
Yeah.
Would one of these alternates take that position at the time? Is that how it works?
That's what you could make that, he completes that term.
Well, the way, let me ask a question of either the town manager or the chairman or even perhaps Mr. Bruno. If, when, when our DRB member resigns, does the alternate, alternate automatically become a member? Or do we have to appoint them? I think we have to appoint them, right? So, so my question is, would it be appropriate now to appoint Mr. Childs as the member and reappoint Sean Steves as the alternate at this point? Or? I'm just trying to make it efficient or expedient, if you know what I'm saying. Or at May 1st, the first meeting in May, we got to reappoint this guy as a, as a primary member.
That's not that hard.
Okay, we'll do that. We just have to remember on May 1st, the first meeting in May, we've got to accept Mr. Steves' resignation and appoint Mr. Childs as a member.
Any other comments, questions on this? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The tree warden, Scott Welch. I guess it's our understanding that Scott has agreed to continue as tree warden. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct. He's here.
We'll make a motion we appoint Scott Welch for, for tree warden for another year.
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion on the tree warden. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Scott wants.
Well, I don't know if it's the right time to discuss this or wait till after you appoint me. I wanted to try and advocate for some more money on some troubled trees that are around. I guess the point of me trying to put it onto my budget and ask the community for eight or 10 or $12,000, I know that the vote would be a no right off the bat. So I'm, I guess, I don't know if it's a petition or advocating for some more money to take down some troubled trees that are in the area. I can write them down as address so you can visually see them or I can take pictures of them and bring them to you. I'll give you, for instance, one of them is down at Hydeville Baseball Field. Many kids there, a lot of cars parked in there. There is a box elder. Two of us can't get our arms around. There's five limbs. We're down to two. The other two are on the ground. I'm proposing that we get rid of it. I've already talked to people who own it, which is, everybody knows. Things like that, I think, should be taken care of in the idea of, these are where a lot of people park. A lot of kids go there and play. Things like that, I think, we should take care of.
Where would you get the money?
Well, that's what I'm coming to ask for. I don't know where.
Mike?
I, I asked, so you know, I asked Scott to be here because he's come to me over the past year along with the highway crew with a list of, there's 80 something trees. I want to, I think it was 82, to be honest, but don't quote me. 80-plus trees in the town that they're saying are trouble nuisance tree, nuisance trees that should be taken down. So we, that doesn't fit into a budget. So we're looking at saying, you could probably, we could probably, the town could probably spend $100,000 just getting rid of trees. Do we all, they need to be all taken down today? No. But over the next few years, it, they're, they could be in the road. They could be on someone's property. Like we, we took down trees here that were our trees hanging over the property, by falling on people's houses. It was the right thing to do. The board chose to go that route. So some of this is, falls in that arena. But there's also the Emerald Ash Borer. We got ash trees up on Pencil Mill Road that should be taken down. We've, we're looking at a grant to do it, but if we don't get the, the grant, then we're back to looking at them saying, boy, I wish we could take these down. So in the ARPA money pot, what I wanted to do is be able to have Scott come for the select board and I'll put it on the list and you can choose whether or not you want to do any of it or all of it or some of it, whatever. But at least to get him to try to articulate what he's seeing out there rather than what I'm seeing.
I think you, you're going to have to make a, maybe you're already in the process, a specific proposal to Mike.
Yep.
Who will then pass it on to the board for considerations.
Because I know that two years ago I had extra money. But with COVID and trees and valancords, they weren't coming out and going to take down certain trees that were in the public or they were just too busy. They couldn't get the manpower to do those jobs. And I kind of have two or three trees that are on the list. And we've talked about a stump grinder. You know, it's $150 for a tree that's a basketball. Some of these trees, we can't get our arms around. And they're, sewer lines, water lines, I know are going to be in the way. And if we don't chip them, you know, that's the other route to go down. So.
I think you answered the question that I had, Mr. Lemey.
This wasn't something you were going to do yourself or the town was going to do. You were going to hire this out?
Yes.
Yeah, all these trees will be hired out?
Right, these trees are all with wires or overhanging buildings.
And, Mr. Chairman, one of, the, the highway crew, they do work with Green Mountain Power. So if we have trees that are hanging or precariously over power lines, we do call Green Mountain Power to try to get them to take it down. Some they do, some they don't. But a lot of times they'll take, they'll cut it down and we'll take the trunks away. They just limb, they take the limbs because we burn the wood up at the garage. So we kind of work with Green Mountain Power and we work with trees and valancords and they'll do the same thing. So it costs less money in the end, but stump grinding, I mean, we're talking.
It's going overboard.
Yeah. You'll probably, I'll probably come back to you, the, the board with, I almost said you guys, I'm sorry. I caught myself.
Okay, I guess I got, I've got one question.
Hold on, can I finish that thought, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
The, the cost.
You haven't finished yet, Mike?
No.
Go ahead.
The cost for, to put a stump grinder on our loader or on the skid steer would pay for itself in relatively short order if we chose to go down that in the future rather than hire this out. And then we can do it on our own schedule, too.
Now can I ask my question?
Now I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
You're not, you're done now?
I'm done.
You're done, okay. My question, are you talking about taking down trees that are on private property?
No.
You're talking about trees that are on public?
Some are, like Dewey or Hydeville Field is owned by the attorney.
The property owner, okay.
Or John Burke. And, but it's, it's, we rent the field and our kids are there.
Okay, I got it.
That one in particular.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thanks. Are you ready for the motion to appoint the tree warden?
Yes.
Did we do that?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Scott. You're the tree warden.
Chairman, can I ask Scott one question?
Yep. Catch him on it, catch him on the way.
Do you have a list or, or at least a list of your top 10 or something along those lines?
I'll have it a couple of days.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you, Scott.
It can wait two weeks. Scott can wait a week or two, I don't, as long as.
Appointment of the fire department officers. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we appoint, you want me to go right down the list? I'll probably have to go right down the list, right? Make, I'm going to do it all together. Make a motion we appoint chief as Heath Gaiet. First Assistant Chief, Dan Ducharme. Second Assistant Chief, John Alexander. Captain, Chris Fredda. And Lieutenant, Bob Perry.
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion.
Can I just tell Allison Perry it's spelled P-I-E? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. I believe that the board is going to ask for a meeting with the chief to discuss various items of concern.
Yeah, I'm going to kick that off with the board tonight during an executive session very briefly if possible.
Fine. Okay, moving on, a letter from Cedar Act about broadband. Is it?
Let you know that Tim Monks is on the line, too.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I don't think there is a motion related to this. There's no detail, no dollar values that I'm aware of.
They're, they're asking for 45, if it's not in that letter, Tim is there. He's, Tim is our representative to the Outer Valley Communication Union District. He's also a member of the Cedar Act. But if, Mr. Chairman, you want to hear him make that pitch to you, he is on Zoom.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, so just to give you guys a little bit of an update where things stand with the Communication Unit District. We have done an engineering study and from that engineering study, there's a, there's a request for approximately $45,000, which could then be matched by the state by, I believe, around $281,000. And the likely use for this would be to pre-buy fiber to lower the overall cost of, of deploying fiber to underserved and unserved areas. I've given Mike copies of the engineering study as well as, there's a draft of a request for proposal, a request for quote, which will be going out to CCI or Fertile Data Communications as well as Comcast and Otelco. And, and looking basically for them to give us proposals. But what has, what has worked in the past with this kind of thing has been where CCI, for instance, would, would have a Communication Unit District or a town purchase the fiber that would go from the main trunks out to the underserved or unserved areas. And then they would be responsible for taking it from, go with that fiber and doing the, the last mile or, or basically connecting that fiber to the underserved or unserved premises. And so, so that's what this money is to be used for. And I said that we, we have a matching, or about $280,000 of matching money that would come through the state. Any questions?
Yeah, Joe?
Yes, Tim. If I heard you correctly, this is, this, this total amount of money that would be contributed both by the town and by the state, something in the neighborhood of $300,000 is just to purchase fiber?
Correct.
What about the installation costs?
So the installation costs are going to be borne by the, well, it, we'll have to see what they come down with proposals. But what has worked in the past and what CCI has done is they have taken responsibility for the last mile or basically connecting from the fiber to each of the premises. So they would bear that cost. We would own this fiber and we would give them essentially a 20-year lease of that fiber. But we would bear the cost of putting that fiber up, you know, from the trunk fiber, which is running down 4A, essentially from Rutland to Fairhaven and out to the underserved areas. And there's maps and all this. I can, I can put some of this up if you want me to go into details on it, but it probably doesn't serve the purpose in this meeting.
So we would bear the cost of getting out to the underserved areas? And what would that cost be?
Well, let's see, there, I probably should pull up some things. Let me see if I can figure out how to share here with you.
Mike Jones is probably going to have to give you co-host permission.
Yeah, so I, I think probably the best thing to do. Yeah, so I I think probably the best thing to do would be to look at the output of the engineering study. But the the total cost is I I think we need to get the proposal back from, you know, the various the various CCI and Comcast and whatnot before we could come up with a a total cost for that. But for this, we were talking about, you know, the the grant allocation from the state will be 281,846, and the town contribution would be 45,095. And I think that the total cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.1 million dollars. But that would probably come out of other funds, more from the infrastructure type of funding.
Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I I feel need to have a better understanding of the whole package here, of not just the purchase of the fiber, but the installation, and especially who's going to pay for what. Because these could get into some pretty big numbers that I don't think we have in our budget.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No, thank you.
Dick?
Tim, just refresh my memory that thing we discussed several months ago, probably in it was either December or January, the number of 4.5 million was tossed around for the town. Do you remember what that number was and what that encompassed?
I believe that number is the the total cost to upgrade all the unserved and underserved residents of Castleton. But there is not supposed to be any Castleton money spent on OCCUD. But if if you'd like, unfortunately, I'm out of town and was not able to prepare real well for this meeting. So I think what would probably be best is to come back and and go through a detailed proposal once we get information back from the the RFP RFQ process.
Okay.
I think that would be best.
I do, too. Do we all think that would be best?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Tim. I guess the board is in agreement to, once the the numbers are finalized, come back to the board, and we'll be happy to discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, liquor license approval. The the police chief has approved all of these, indicating there are no problems with any of the requests.
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Well, wait a minute. We shall we recognize Joe first, or shall we have the the motion? Go ahead, Joe. My question is, no letters of interest for the planning commission. With that said, would the board consider making Mike Holden one of our members? Because we only have three members right now. Mike is an alternate. And I don't have any interest since our untimely death with Mr. Franzone, we're down to three full-time members. And Mike has been coming to the meetings. So I was wondering if you might consider appointing him to fill out Bob Franzone's terms. What's your thoughts, Joe?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion?
Just one question. To your knowledge, Mike's willing to do this and ready to step up?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
It's done.
I hope we can still advertise and hopefully get somebody else on.
Sure.
So we'll have five members, full board, and even alternates.
Yeah.
Good idea, Joe.
Okay, liquor license approval. Can we do these as a group since there's no problem?
I was going to take a stab at that, Mr. Chairman. Are you ready?
Ready.
I make a motion that we approve the following liquor license applications. Dollar General Store, second-class renewal. Prune's Market, second-class renewal. Sebexo, Vermont, second and third-class renewal. Bird's Eye Diner, first-class and outside consumption renewal. Castleton Pizza Place and Deli, Blue Cat Bistro, first-class and outside consumption renewal. And Castleton Village Store, second-class renewal.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Why don't you stand up in a minute, right?
Motion passes.
So now we got a bunch of signatures.
Got a lot of them.
I hope they're all flagged in the right spot.
I mean, some are too small.
Here's the first one.
Thanks. Go together, really. Hey, you got your own pen. Don't be stealing my second pen. New members, I'm telling you.
Better watch them.
I'm gonna. Yeah, just. I mean, it's a great dream and a worthwhile endeavor. Is that one there?
This one's got two on it.
Just be consistent.
Huh?
Just be consistent.
Yes.
You guys took a lot of review.
Hmm?
It's I'm not sure I've signed enough of these.
There's sticky note everywhere we got to sign as far as.
Keep the old fellow from coming up and getting these soon.
I need the exercise.
All right, there's a whole bunch of signatures required on that one. Thank you. So, for example.
Somehow this one got by everybody. Is this a copy? This is a copy.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, let's double check. Do we have one for Bird's Eye Diner in the packet already? I'd bet we do. Who's got the pile?
Are those the signed ones, Jim?
I don't think there's a single pile at this point.
They got you guys got them all.
Okay, we have the file? So the question is, do we have a duplicate for Bird's Eye? We'll have to look at that.
I counted nine times. You should be signing your name.
Do me a favor, Mike. Look and see if we have Bird's Eye when I'm handing these to you.
That's it for me.
This is a duplicate. You don't have to sign it.
Dollar General. That's a duplicate there?
No, this is. The one you're not getting. Okay?
Shouldn't tell me about it.
I think we got it right, Bob.
Are you?
I'm not sure yet. Have you signed your name nine times? I didn't count, but I think I got them all.
That one's missing a signature.
Is it?
Yeah. Which one is it? Sebexo. It's got only four signatures on it.
You thought you were done, Joe. I don't understand how we possibly could have done this. There's one more for you, sir.
Hold on, hold on.
You need a paper clip or a staple.
Castleton Village Store, Dollar General.
There's a paper clip on that one, too.
Castleton Village Store, Sebexo.
You should have a total of six renewals.
Well, actually, there could be a potential.
Well, six.
Because you have the outside consumption or separate documents.
Right.
I'm pretty sure we got them all.
Is this any?
I don't think so.
So you check them all. Castle Pizza Place and Deli. Dollar General, I got it. Sebexo.
You got them. What's this piece?
Those are copies.
Someone don't they're turned sideways, Jim, so they're because there's no they were turned opposite ways.
So we had some runaway paper clips.
Sorry.
They don't have legs.
Okay, finished that. Preferred alternatives for the pedestrian scoping study. I believe we all have copies of that. We had a presentation by the engineering firm. And the engineering firm would, if possible, like a decision as to the preferred work so they can move forward. What are your thoughts?
Well, I liked option three with the exception of the option three did not include the sidewalk going from Diamond Hollow up to Sand Hill Road, and I think it should be included, which was an option four.
Okay.
Other than that, I really am not overly emotionally attached to any of these plans, except for I think that the sidewalk should be run all the way from the Amtrak station to the to Sand Hill Road.
Okay. Joe?
Well, I was working off the memorandum, February 25th memorandum, which gave us a whole set of choices to make under a bunch of categories. And so if you all have that available, on location, I preferred two, which is alternative three. On bicycle accommodations, I prefer two. On locations, I prefer two A. On options for additional parking, I prefer one. Sidewalk width, number two, which is six foot wide. Sidewalk material, number one, which is concrete. Crosswalk treatment, prefer one and two. Street lighting, prefer one.
Mary Lee.
Mary Lee.
You might not have this, Mary Lee. Did you? Did you get this?
Second page in on the big pack.
You got it.
Okay.
So we're we're talking from Amtrak to Sand Hill with these different options?
Correct.
I have no problem.
And therefore, what is your choice, Mary Lee? Is it?
I would agree with Joe.
Would you agree with Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I I just want to point out, Mary Lee, that the sidewalk limits that I talked about go from Glenbrook to the rail trail, not Sand Hill to the rail trail.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I still agree.
So did you want to change your preferred alternative, Mary Lee, based on that?
Yes, I I will go along with Joe on that.
Did you say you're still going along with Joe?
No, yes.
You are. Okay. All right. How about you, Bob?
Do you want me to go down through I go down through all of them? I I chose number three. I think the sidewalks have to go from Sand Hill Road. I don't know if they necessarily need to go to the Delaware and Hudson Rail Trail, but I'm in favor of going from Sand Hill Road into town. So I chose number three on that first section.
Okay.
Bicycle accommodations, I chose number two. Crosswalk locations, I chose number two B. Options for additional parking, I chose number one, closing off Main Street driveway to the former Texaco adds five or six angle parking spots. Sidewalk width, I chose six foot like Joe did. Sidewalk material, I chose concrete. Crosswalk treatment, I chose direct angle rapid flashing beak beacons. But I don't know if that's that's appropriate for Main Street of Castleton. So I may I'd be willing to change my thought on that. The street lining, I also chose one between South Street and Beale Block and Main Street. Those are my choices.
I just had to catch up. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
For for the crosswalk treatment, Bob, what did you pick?
I picked number three, but I kind of I don't know if we want a flashing sign 24/7, if that's what that means.
My understanding, Bob, was that those are the ones where the pedestrian walks up and pushes the button and the lights flash for a finite period of time?
Yeah, I I do like that. I do like that.
I the only place I've seen those is a couple places up in the Burlington area, and I think they're great.
Yeah.
Yeah, Burgen's has them in there.
That is why I picked that, yeah. It just gets your attention. As long as they're not flashing all the time.
I think if you're driving a truck and you need time to stop.
Yeah. Those are my choices.
Okay. I guess I'm in agreement with Joe and Mary Lee.
I'll go with the consensus with the exception, I think the sidewalk should go to Sand Hill Road.
Okay.
And not stop at Glenbrook.
Shall we shall we vote on that? Think we have to, don't we? If we can get if we can get it straightened out.
Yeah.
What we're voting on.
So I've got three people. We got Mary Lee, Joe, and Jim going for that number. Location, alternative three, bicycle, option two. Bicycle and.
Too many options.
The locations, two A's, what Joe had, two A on. Which one was it, Joe? Alternative?
That was crosswalk locations.
That was crosswalk locations.
Yeah, two A. Okay, and then additional parking, option one. Sidewalk width, six feet. Material is concrete. And then the lighting, was it lighting? No, not lighting.
Crosswalk treatment.
Yeah, treatment. And lighting was one, and the treatment, you said one and two, Joe?
Yeah, I, but I'm, and I, I'm willing to support the rectangular beacons at this point.
Okay, so that'd be three.
And street lighting, location is one.
Okay. So that's, that would be the last, for tho, for those three. And, and then Dick was the only one that said the option four, to go Sand Hill to Amtrak. So it's the whole, it's from Sand Hill all the way to the Amtrak station, is that what you said?
Bob likes that as well.
I like that, too. I think it needs to go from Sand Hill into town. I don't know if it needs to go over the Amtrak, but...
Well, the, all the other alternatives include the sidewalk from Glenbrook on the south side of Main Street, from Glenbrook to the rail trail, which is the Amtrak station. All four alternatives, well, all, well, option one was doing nothing. So the options two, three, and four all had sidewalks from Glenbrook to the Amtrak station on the south side of the road.
I'm in favor.
Option four is the only one that has the sidewalk going all the way to Sand Hill.
Okay, I'm in favor of that.
So on the sidewalk limits, I liked alternative four. Everything else I was pretty in agreement with the rest of the board. On page one of this memo.
Okay.
Sidewalk location, I'm, you know, I, I like the alternative, the sidewalk limits in alternative four.
That's what I circled.
Alternative three.
Number three. Yep. That's what it says, sidewalk limits shown in alternative four.
So it sounds like there's two, two people for option, alternative four for the location, and three, Mary Lee, Joe, and Jim are picking the option that it goes from Glenbrook to Amtrak.
So they're, they're in option two, is that, is that correct, Joe? In that sidewalk location, you picked number two?
Yes.
I've just been, now I don't, since they moved the fire station, we don't, it doesn't come up for me as much. But I hate to tell you how many times I've driven a truck through Diamond Hollow, heading either to or from the station at two o'clock in the morning, and almost got a college kid.
Because they have those apartments that are on the end of Sand Hill.
And they like to walk, go walk up and down on the wrong side of the road wearing a black hoodie at two o'clock in the morning.
Was it closed, they were coming from the library?
Probably not.
Libraries closed at two o'clock in the morning, that's going to...
And, you know, and granted, they...
I think so.
Oh, okay.
I would like to think a 20-year-old young adult would be more responsible than that, but I'm sorry, there's sometimes alcohol involved or other things, and they make poor choices.
Could I have one question?
Sure, Mary Lee.
On the crosswalk treatment, when you're talking about, where are you talking about the flashing light? At Glenbrook? What, what crosswalk are you talking about?
I assumed all of, all three of them, all three crosswalks are all four.
But it says choose treatment and location, so you could pick your, you could pick and choose a location.
I, I can go along with that as well.
And this is preliminary. I mean, the, the plan is still yet to be firmed up, so they're just looking for a place to start at this point, is my understanding, is that correct, Jim?
This gives them a pretty good shot at it, I think.
Yep.
So have, Mike, have you recorded the consensus position of the board?
I have.
You have?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consensus position of the board on the scoping, sidewalk scoping project as recorded by the town manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second after discussion.
Discussion.
Well, what did we settle on? It was two to two on?
Two to three on the...
Oh, three. So it's still Glenbrook to Amtrak, option, the alternative four from Glenbrook to Sand Hill is not in this consensus.
Okay. We got outvoted, three to two.
We haven't voted yet.
Oh.
Any other comments before we vote? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, three to two? Okay.
On record, though. And it's not cast in concrete yet.
No. Okay, proposal meeting with Hubbardton to discuss acquisition of the village school. I believe, Joe, you've done quite a bit of work and research on this. Does the board wish to appoint one or two individuals to meet with representatives from Hubbardton? I would say as soon as possible, for the simple reason that I believe the information we have from the Slate Valley School District is that they will be abandoning ship on June 30th, not the end of the calendar year. So we better get going on it. Would you be willing to continue your work there, Joe?
I would.
Okay. Do you think you can handle it? Alone, without someone else?
I'd rather have a colleague on that.
Boy, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, today Janet Maury, we got a, she's going to be the point of contact, and she can meet during the day, so if that helps with whoever gets on this, it's not going, it doesn't be at night, it can be during the day.
Okay. Would somebody else like to volunteer to work with Joe on this?
I'll work with Joe.
Can I put your hand up?
Is he twisting your arm, Mary Lee?
I wasn't twisting it, I was just trying to put it up.
Okay. All right, Mary Lee will work with you, Joe, is that okay?
Of course.
Of course.
But I, just a point of clarification, this is to come to mutual agreement on the use of the building that we haven't yet purchased, correct?
I thought there was discussion of a steering committee.
Steering committee?
That, that the...
To discuss the, the use.
Possible use.
Possible use.
Use or disposition.
Right.
Okay.
I, I can bring this up under select board's comments, but I, I think we also need to address the issue of purchase and sale.
Definitely, yeah. Okay.
And we are waiting on an attorney right now for the property line adjustment, but since the town's, I talked to the attorney for the school, and since the town's going to own both, they own the library property and the school property, he's like, you're going to own both of it, you know, there's no rush to get that done because you're going to own it.
Okay.
So we could, it still can move forward without that being done at this point.
So I guess we have a couple of board members who have volunteered to continue on with that.
I just, just got one question, Joe. Were you, were you going to entertain with Hubbardton whether they want to? How do I ask this? Whether they want to be part of this deal? They voted to buy the building as we did to?
Correct.
So they, they've already answered that question?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
And again, I, for clarification, is it the board's intention that this process would be an inclusive process that would allow members of the Castleton and Hubbardton communities to contribute their ideas?
Does anybody have any objections to that?
I think that's important.
Okay. All right, no objections.
Thank you.
All right, have we taken care of that?
I just had one more, just to clear on this.
Go ahead.
We will take responsibility for 89% and Hubbardton will take 11% responsibility. That's already set in stone?
Yes.
Okay. No share in the cost of maintaining it, 11%. Okay, okay. And I believe we're all aware that there isn't any money in the town budget beginning July 1 for the operation of that building, and it's my understanding neither is it any money in the Hubbardton budget for the operation of that building. Should that's what the decision will be. Joe?
I, I believe I heard at one point that the supervisory district had set money aside for the maintenance of the building, but of course, they haven't had a budget approved yet, so I don't know where that stands.
Do you have any information on that, Mike?
I'd rather wait till after they have their meeting, but my early discussions with them about other issues like the fuel tanks and stuff, they, they have not committed any to, to the towns to say, we'll, we'll assist in providing some money to offset some costs. So that's, that's an ongoing discussion that has to have, be having. There's no, the, the, today, the email I got today said, we are not planning on provide, giving the towns any money for the inspection of the fuel tanks, both of them.
Is that right? Well, I think you're going to find out that when you sell a piece of property and there's, and there's a possibility of hazardous waste, it is the responsibility of the seller to do that inspection.
I have a meeting with them, a Zoom meeting with them tomorrow. I just got, I'm just reading the email, so I haven't had any conversation subsequent to that email.
Right. Anything, anything else from the board? Yes, Rob?
Oh. Was I correct in the fact that that was, the kids weren't allowed back because they found asbestos there after the pipe leaked?
That's, they're, they're mitigating that, they went through, that, they had an insurance claim on that, so when they're done, it's been mitigated and...
The entire school's been checked?
Just, just, I don't know about that, I can't answer that, I just know...
We don't end up with that building and then have to go through and do the asbestos removal ourselves?
I, I can't answer that one right now. Just the, I only know the areas that was affected, because it was glue on the backside of the baseboards that they've, they inspected that area, but I'm not sure about the whole school.
Maybe worth looking into, so it's not out of our pocket.
Okay. Anything else on that? If not, we'll move on to the, a very, very brief manager's report.
Do we have to, do we have to vote on Joe and Mary?
I don't know, if we want to, we can vote on it.
I don't, if we don't need, no, okay.
Do you think we need to?
You have anything, Mike, that you wanted to go over?
I, I'll just leave it to, the stuff's highlighted in yellow, you know where the changes were from the last report?
Yep.
And if you have any questions that I can answer, or take your questions if I can't answer them and seek answers for you.
Okay. Questions for Mike on the manager's report? Mary Lee?
None.
None. Bob?
I don't think on the manager's report, no.
Okay. Dick?
Nothing, and I haven't even already talked to him, already talked to him, Bob.
Okay, Joe?
Well, I was just interested if you had any further comments about the sewer plant annual loan payment surprise.
I haven't, I, this week I have to give them the updated spreadsheet to show what that budget's going to look like, so I haven't done that yet.
Okay. Okay, nothing else? Congratulations, Mike, you set a record. Moving on, purchase orders for approval. We have a purchase order here, the points for the first responders in the amount of $7,500, but someone care to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve purchase order number zero five, zero four five, zero five three to VFIS for the points fund for the Castleton first responders.
Is there a second?
Second?
And a second, discussion? Seeing none, all those...
Well, I just wanted to ask...
Well, sure, I'm sorry.
No, this is the fire department, is this the...
No, it's first responders.
How many first responders do we have?
I don't know, does, Dan, do you have a clue? I don't. There's just not many. Four or five?
Not active ones anymore.
Okay, I was just curious. I thought that's what it meant, I just, $7,500 for one or two people, I just...
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. The warrants for approval, we have 13 of them.
I'll make a motion that we approve warrant number 0314R for $6,422.30. Warrant 0314 for $144,016.18. Warrant 0310 for $7,056.13. Warrant 0308 for $15,678.40. Warrant 0303 for $5,514.91. Warrant 0224 for $5,909.61. Warrant 0310P for $16,965.55. Warrant 0303P for $16,056.06. And warrant 0224P for $16,064.63.
Is there a second?
Excuse me, I think that last number was 83 cents?
It was, I'm sorry, my mistake. So to correct, it's $16,064.83.
Add second.
And a second. Discussion of these warrants. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I believe we have a couple others here.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0311P for $665.95. Warrant number 0304P for $634.28. Warrant 0225P for $634.28.
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion.
I recuse myself.
Recuse yourself. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
I will make a motion to approve warrant number 0309P for $1,939.34.
Is there a second? And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I recuse myself.
I'll recuse myself, too.
Okay. There you go, Bob, 13.
11 for me. Here's that one, I can't sign. Not as closely as I should be, obviously.
No one said I was going to get right to scrum.
That's true.
Just getting warmed up, ma'am.
Disability insurance with select board members, huh?
Purple Tona?
Purple Tona.
Purple Tona.
After 13.
We have thirteen.
They're all there, Dave.
All there?
They're all there.
Okay, great. Moving on to select board comments and/or concerns, Mary Lee?
None at this time.
Okay, Bob?
I got three.
Three, okay, start with number one.
Uh, I don't know who can answer this, hopefully Mike can. Piantec Road, is it class four or class three?
Class four.
Class four. What can we do, what, I guess, I don't wanna get into it too much, but I had a taxpayer ask me what we have to do as a board to get it changed to class three.
Well, first of all, we're gonna have to get with the property owners about the, the right of way, and, and the road's not really wide enough, and it started years ago, I, I talked to the Young family, I talked to Ralph. There was a little bit of bitterness there of what happened, I'm not gonna go into that right now, but then the property was being sold, so it never really went anywhere. So we're still putting money into the road, we don't get any money from the state, any assistance from the state to maintain that under a class four category or classification. So it's been brought up, the, the highway guys know about this as well, because those, some of those landowners are approaching them about it as well.
Okay.
So.
Are we working towards?
Well, I guess if the board wants to go through that process and wants to make it a class three, we would actually get some money for it. It's not a lot, but certainly anything would help. And it's just, there's a lot of work to be done out there. I think that we need to do our homework on that first to make sure we're looking at what the cost would be to do that, between ditches, culverts, and we don't know what some of the bases. We were told what it, what it could be of what was put in there, but we don't really know that for a fact at this point.
Okay. Do we, do we plow it and maintain it, though, to our best of our ability?
We do.
We do.
There was a water problem at the bottom of it, that turned out to be a, a problem with the states. Route four A, it wasn't on Piantac.
Okay.
But we, we had to go down there and do some creative ditch work, but it froze up again, and it caused some water to back up, but most of the problem lied, lied to the state. So the, our garage guys reached out to them, and at one point they said they couldn't find a culvert. Whether that's true or not, I didn't speak to them directly, but it, we, we do maintain it.
Why are these taxpayers asking to change it to class three versus from class four? What, what, what benefit is it to them?
I'd be speculating, but if, if the, if they're trying to sell the property.
It'd be better to have a class three road.
And there's, the, the property owner up there wants to sell, I got, I got a visit from them about putting some can, uh, can, tent sites up there to do that, plus some houses, so it'd certainly benefit them for, to have a road that would maybe be in better shape.
Okay, can we, something we can keep on our radar, can we?
Yeah, if the board really wants me to, well, I mean, if you want me to get the cost estimates, I certainly can do that, and come back to you with what that looks like.
Sure, just, I'd like to be able to answer the taxpayer.
Right.
No way, or we're gonna look into it, or?
I'll, I'll look into it.
Okay.
I do remember as a kid, or even as a young man, that road wasn't even passable.
No, you're right.
And then it got upgraded, I believe Mr. Decker might have been the
You're right.
road foreman at the time.
Absolutely.
And I don't recall what the rationale behind that was.
Yeah.
But prior to that, that road wasn't even passable.
That's right.
It was a snowmobile trail.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot, what I was told, there's a lot of big pieces of slate that are down in there, too, so
we just wanna make sure the bases, the subbase is good.
Okay, what's your second question?
Second question, when can we expect a dollar figure on the sewer system going down Preston Lane and Crystal Heights, Mike? Is that something that's in the?
Yeah, I'm still waiting for Wayne Elliott to give me, there's three of them, there's Preston Lane, Crystal Heights, and Creek Road.
Creek Road, too?
Out to, just past Wooders.
So it's in the works?
Yeah, we're just, he, he has them all, he's, he had to dust off, he, he remembers going, the one on Creek Road, too. So just wait for him to get back to me on it.
Okay.
What was the first one?
I was asking about Piantec Road, class four.
No, I mean the first.
Preston Lane?
Preston Lane, yeah, Crystal Heights, and then Creek Road, Mike says, no.
Thank you.
This question is for Joe. I felt foul out of my chair at the night of the town meeting when you said the Salt and Sanched was gonna cost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where did you get that figure from, Joe? I just curious. I think I got that from Mike. You did?
Yeah, we, we've done our preliminaries, some preliminary research on types of buildings and what they may cost, and the Towne Fair Havens, if you, you can reach out to them, they had to go for a second grant on theirs, because it went over five hundred thousand.
I'd have to look at what they got. I, I checked with Westrol, and they got those jersey barriers, the stackable jersey barriers on the sides, and then they got the big canvas over top. And of course, it was seven or eight years ago, and the fellow told me it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what Brent looked at, was the Quonset hut type with the mesh type stuff over it.
And it's tripled in price?
Yeah, I mean, everything, God, you
How much now?
Well, that's, that's poured concrete, though, that's not block walls, though.
Okay, so the block walls would be a little cheaper probably now.
If those will actually meet requirements now, they may or may not, I don't know.
They're push walls, and you don't want them pushing out, and
You know, every, every time you turn around, they seem to raise the bar on some certain things, and that may or may not be one of them.
I was just floored when you said that. I could see it, that may be doubling, but I can't imagine it tripling.
I, when they were building the pole barn over, at the transfer station over the bulky bins, I talked to Bud Carpenter, who's up there, and he does that kind of work, and that, that's, those are the, that's the prices. And the only thing about the Quonset hut is we, we have the, the semis come in and dump that, so when you got, you get closer to the edge, you can't raise it up all the way, so, and we're starting to look at, is that the right fit either, so.
This is raised up in Westrol, and I don't know if you've seen it in Westrol.
It's set up on the, on the barriers.
It's on the barriers, so it's way up, yeah, there's no, even if they get over to the side, but no loader pushes it and stuff. I was just shocked when you said that figure that night, that's all I had, Mr. Howard.
Dick?
Uh, just one thing, it was brought to my attention recently that, was it Senator Sanders?
Yes.
Senator Sanders had an earmark in one of the latest appropriations in the Senate, and there one of that, one of those earmarks is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar allotment for the, to assist our library in ADA expansion, which includes the handicap bathroom and the elevator. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I believe that puts them where they need to be? To finance that project, or it certainly helps?
It helps, yes. The, the, I was not at the bid opening, but I know the person who was there.
Yeah.
And as we all feared, the bids came back fifty percent higher than they had imagined they would be before the pandemic. So this, this, this goes a long way towards shrinking the gap that they have, but they're still working on it.
Yeah, just a comment, I don't recall the last time I saw an architectural estimate that actually was anywhere near close to what the bids wind up being when we get the jobs bid.
Okay, Joe?
Uh, just one brief comment to build on what Dick just said. I think if Nancy Mark were on the phone, she would wanna add that she got a lot of help from Jonas and, and Karen Stewart in filling out the application form for that. After they had sent an initial letter requesting an earmark, the, the town office staff had to complete a relatively elaborate form.
That it on select board comments, concerns? Okay, brief recap. Do we need anything on that? Here's we don't. Need an executive session, Mike? Two? Okay.
What's the first one, Mike?
What's the first one?
Labor relations, and then real estate.
So I make a motion, we go into executive session with the board and the town manager for labor relations at nine oh three.
A second? And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.